Thank you, Don. All right. No, like that I can. Bringing the April 5th Hamilton County Council meeting to order. My moderator, can I have a roll call?
Brad Beaver.
Here.
Mark Hall.
Present.
Amy Moslomni.
Present.
Ken Alexander.
Present.
Sue Mackey.
Present.
Tim Griffin.
Present.
Steve Nation.
Present.
Mr. President, your turn.
Okay, with that, Amy, you're signed up to, I guess, in the invocation and pledge tonight.
Yes.
You would all bow your heads and pray in your own way. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the March 1st, 2023 meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. My moderator, do we have any public comments tonight? Okay, seeing none, all right. Moving on, for committee and officer reports, to start off with the president's report saying, I've met with some members of the Farm Bureau and I'm having a scheduled meeting with Peru Extension to discuss the fairgrounds. In addition, we, you know, there's multiple other projects that we're working on and with the major projects and the work section we just had that I'll be taking on that as well. Please, President, do you have anything?
I do not, sir.
Highway, Mark, unless you want me, I'll go ahead and read.
Oh, no, go right ahead.
Okay. We met and we were provided with an updated project sheet, which has been passed out. That, I think that meets the needs of what council had requested with some additional money. Is that good?
Yes.
Okay. And we were also notified of an award of $7,248,000 in grants, which was an 80-20 grant for Dunbar Road, which was listed on the project sheet, but you'll see in the new update. So with that, Highway, we'll have other items that are on the agenda and we'll discuss them at that time. Finance.
We've had two finance meetings since the last time we met. You've got one in paper, one came by email, the last one by email, so I'll let you peruse those or ask questions as you have. Basically, it was a discussion of how we're going to handle the financing on 1046 and Allenville and the next intersection after that. So if you review the minutes, you'll see what we've worked out. We can do it. One's going to get patched back a little bit. But there are a couple other items that I want to talk to you as a member of the Finance Committee this evening. Number one, I'm going to pass these out. You don't have to decide this evening, but these are budget instructions. Look at these budget instructions and by next month, be prepared to vote on budget instructions. Number two, the Finance Committee, if you look through the meetings, as a group, has agreed that we would recommend moving up one step in the WIS study. Okay? Read you those minutes. It's a $5 million number, but we felt like it's what we had to do to stay competitive in the marketplace as far as raises. And one other question that we actually need to answer tonight is, are we going to allow department heads to ask for additional people in the next budget hearings? Some years, we just told them, oh, like, don't ask for people. The last few years, you say, you can make a request. You may not get it, but you can make a request. So we need to decide that this evening. Have I got a thought?
I see.
Can you hear me, Ken?
That wasn't very nice.
No, it wasn't.
At least I haven't gotten what my brothers call me, which is Kenneth Fango.
Generally thinking, I don't have any problem with them asking.
I don't either. As long as they have a business plan that supports why they need it.
Asking is one thing, getting is another, and I get more upset with them when we upset when we ask for people mid-year. You know what I mean?
No, they should. I think all had an ask for our budget here.
Make the justification at budget hearing and give a yes or no then.
I agree.
I agree.
That's just my opinion.
Yeah, if they don't ask, then, you know, there's no way they're going to get it or gross. They need to.
Is this the time that we're making that decision or is it?
Yeah. The budget instructions don't need the final decision until next month, but the yes or no on letting them ask for new people, they kind of.
Don, you want to vote on that?
Yeah, do you have a motion?
No, we don't need a motion.
Just a general consensus.
I think general consensus is yes, that they can ask.
Okay.
Thank you. That way I can send out something to the department head so they can start their footwork.
All right, and one other thing I have, unless people have particular questions on the Finance Committee meeting, then they're extensive, if you read through them, is it's come to my attention, all of us is our attention, that the sewer septic plant for the campground, which was previously okay and was paid for out of ARPA money, is a million dollars over budget. So Chris Dice has called meeting, called, I think, several, I told him, called everybody that they need a million dollars to complete this project. So I thought about it for a minute and I said, well, we're probably going to do that. Let me see if we can use ARPA money. So I went back and checked. The ARPA money's all been earmarked, but we earmarked two sconces of money, $2.5 million apiece, for affordable housing. One had been appropriated, one is not. One is still sitting on our agenda. My suggestion to the council, and if we get approval here, then we'll go, we'll call for an ARPA meeting, is that we would untable it, use a million dollars of the affordable housing money, million dollars, towards this sewer project that will qualify because it is already being funded with ARPA money. And we would also, in addition to that, make a resolution that if the Affordable Housing Group comes up with a project before the time limit runs out, we will produce that million dollars back to make that fund whole. The reason I say that is, is that by checking and Todd's here, he can go in more detail, that clock's ticking on ARPA money. You gotta have, you gotta have it.
I want to interject. Because we did talk about this earlier in our pre-council meeting, so there was discussion over, do we, I'm in agreement with you that it should be ARPA, but ultimately.
Can we just discuss this as part of the table?
Yes, can we move on to this?
Well, I just want to lay out the whole picture, because not only would we have to approve it here, and that's why I added that language about a resolution.
Yeah.
Then we have to have an ARPA meeting. Now, the truth of matter is, when we get to ARPA, there's three councils and three commissioners. I don't know what their feeling is. They may be happy to do it. They may say, oh, no, we got to keep that money. But to me, the clock's ticking on ARPA money. You got to be under contract by '24 and completed by '26. As of today, they haven't spent a dime of that $5 million. Not the first $2.5, not any. Now, there may be a project out there that's bubbling.
Yeah.
But, but we could use this money for a project that's ready to go. And if they get one, we'll put the money back.
Yeah.
Okay, well, with that, is there anything else from finance?
Nope.
Okay, great. Mislenics, or I'm sorry, personnel.
We met, and we'll be discussing some of that later on in the meeting.
Okay, great. Anyone have any miscellaneous? Seeing none, we'll go to item eight, table business.
Mr. President, motion to untable fund $89.50 Affordable Housing in the amount of $2.5 million for discussion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And so this goes back into the discussion as to why. So I'm in agreement that I believe that $2.5 million should go back to ARPA completely, not segmenting out 1.5, and only because we don't have a plan. We already have 2.5 appropriated, right, that has been appropriated and it has, there's been nothing spent. I think we got a report that, as of now. And so if you send out that 2.5, ARPA then can make the decision, they can leave the 1.5, right, for when affordable housing's ready, then we can appropriate it as such, right, from ARPA dollars. But the $1 million should cover then the White River campground. That's my opinion.
It's a project that was already funded out of that.
Yeah.
It was a ARPA project, and so this would keep it within the revenue and funds that was supporting it before. I'm in agreement as well. It's money that's there to be used and, you know, better than spending our own cash right now. So when we have an idea of what affordable housing can be in the future, I'm sure we're going to be, I know I will be supportive of filling that gap when that comes up.
Yes.
I'll jump on the same bandwagon, but I went out and spent a couple hours out at the campground with the team from Parks, and we are precariously close to a real issue if that sewage spills into White River. We've got a substantial problem. So something has to be done.
I'm in agreement that we need to fix the campgrounds. We need to get that done. I'm okay with doing, using the ARPA funds. However, I like the idea of a resolution to make the housing whole to 2.5 million. I can't speak to the details, but I know there's teams of people working and it's not a quick process, but they, that money will be well spent. And if it's not, we can easily spend that quickly. And actually, it is, we have, I'm not worried about the time ticking on that part of it, but we can, I'm for the resolution and using that.
I'm helpful with that, too.
I do have one question. Connor, do we have, on the ARPA dollars, do we have a resolution in place for reimbursement for projects that run through the ARPA?
It can't be reimbursed.
Well, no, but it reimbursed the fund.
It can't.
Why, when?
We talked about this earlier, that you.
I don't know if we have an ordinance, but it's a reimbursement ordinance that leads to.
Sorry, time out for if you take this 2.5 that the ARPA committee allocated for the affordable housing group back to this ARPA general. I don't believe we have a resolution or ordinance that.
Let me clarify. If the issue is as dire as what Councilman Hall had mentioned, that we need to get this fixed and we want to use our own cash to go do that, is there a resolution in place that can allow ARPA to refund our cash that we're putting into a project? Does that make sense?
Yeah, well, you can't. We've done that earlier.
There is not at this time, no.
There's not one, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Can you do that? That was my thing. I didn't think that we could reimburse.
You could.
We could reimburse the ARPA.
Yeah, you would be able to. It can't be used for reimbursement for bond payments or judgment against the county. You could probably do on the government service part of it, but I think we've already allocated or accounted for that, Rob, is that correct, the $10 million for the government services where we are free to spend the ARPA for any government expenses.
I think, Todd, we haven't hit that $10 million.
We haven't hit that, but I think what he's asking.
If they use cash first, yeah.
He's asking if we use ARPA dollars, no, if we use another fund for the million, he's asking, can we take those ARPA dollars to refund that money? And I didn't think we could.
Well, who don't have an ordinance in place, then I don't think we could do it today.
Yeah, I don't think, yeah.
Even if we did, it's federal dollars, and I didn't think we could.
Unless you use that money that you took out of that current fund and use ARPA to pay for another ARPA committed project or service or something that that fund would have been used for originally, but I don't know what fund it is. There's no ordinance.
Well, so there's no ordinance, so I don't think this is even.
Could an ARPA committee meeting just be called to have that discussion next week, right, to then make sure that it's then on the agenda for, if you guys approve ARPA dollars?
We don't plan on having, so the meeting will be the meeting. I need to hear from Steve Nation, because as it sits right now, me and Sue and Steve are now, there's no more rotating members, we're permanent members, is that correct? Steve, you got a feeling on this?
I agree with what Sue said and I think what Amy said. I'm perfectly okay in going ahead and approving it, and especially if it's advanced, Mark says, yeah, let's go ahead and approve it. But I would like the commitment then, along with that, that we will back that up with a million dollars from General if we have to do for housing.
I appreciate that, because I didn't want to get to an ARPA meeting and not have all the counselors on board. I will say this, to Ken's question, later on in our meeting, I think Parks is on here asking for the money.
Ninety, yeah.
And if we're going to do this, I don't think we can, we're going to have to table that motion, because if we're going to use ARPA money, we can't use General Fund, we can't even use their fund, we can't use Rainy Day.
Right.
It has to be.
Does anyone know when that money is needed?
I thought it was June or July, that that was what the Parks information was sent. The $1 million, as far as when he was needing it. So could we get it to a place where it was tabled for this month and then May we approve it?
Yes, because.
Once it goes through, if it approves through ARPA.
So we can get to ARPA, get the blessing from the three commissioners and be back here. But even, but at that point, we're ready to make an ARPA appropriation, aren't we, Robin? Once it's through the ARPA committee?
Yes, it's just.
It's just a transfer.
Okay. But we, but we can't do it if we use any other funds. We can't use the ARPA funds. That's what Connor was just telling us, there's no way to take it out of the General Fund and then replace General Fund money with ARPA money.
Right.
Unless you're going to use those General Fund dollars for a permitted ARPA project or use or something.
Well, it is.
No, 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 no. He's saying a different project.
A different project.
That $1 million, you're going to use it for something else that would be permitted under ARPA, then you could.
Which would be affordable housing.
Effectively, effectively, you'd come up with a new project that we would normally be paying cash with, and we would just use ARPA to go for with that.
But wouldn't that be that $1 million that we're even talking about? Is there not whole like that? Wouldn't that be the same?
Yes, it would. I think, do we have consensus that, I think that we're going to go back, since we don't need it till June or July, and we can go through the process in May? Is that, do we have consensus that?
Yeah, I just don't want to make a wrong move and not be able to recoup the money. And we'll call the commissioners next week and try to set up a one-item ARPA meeting, you know what I mean?
Yep.
And try to get that, and then we'll be ready to go in May.
Amy, would you like to revise your motion to, well, you're on table, so do we have a motion?
Yeah, so this would be, we have the motion on the, the untable with the discussion, and so it should look for.
One more thing I throw in, they're going to get going now. They're ready to move now. Every day we wait, I don't think they want to wait till June or July.
I don't think so either, but the truth of matter is, they've already, I don't even remember what the original dollar amount was, but I don't know if they can't, if they can't move with the original dollar amount because the project came in over budget, you know what I'm saying?
I do.
Can you let the bids if you don't have enough money?
I think they've got a contractor ready to go. They just want the funding and they'll start.
Well, here's what we can do in that case.
Have we approved any ARPA?
I think on our budget, on our agenda, they've got three sources of funding, and one of them is the County Parks Department's own budget.
That's just, those are just resolutions. We didn't have time to advertise that, so no money's movement.
There's no funding. There's no money right now anyway, so it doesn't matter.
It's going to be made.
Okay. So then the motion on the table then is to untable. We've discussed it. And so you would need a motion then to untable.
You need to vote?
Yeah, we need a vote, sorry.
Is there a motion to vote on?
We have to, we have to vote on the motion to untable.
Oh, sorry. Madam Attorney, can I have a roll call?
Brad Beaver.
Yes.
Who's next? Mark Hall.
Yes.
Amy Moslomni.
Yes.
Ken Alexander.
Yes.
Sue Mackey.
Yes.
Tim Griffin.
Yes.
Steve Nation.
Yes.
All right, do I have a motion to act on the affordable housing?
So moved.
Second.
What is your motion?
Yeah, we don't.
The motion, unlike Amy, I'm not wanting to, I'm wanting to send back a million dollars, not the $2.5 million.
So your motion, what I say acts, your motion is to, is to revise the $2.5 million? I'm trying to understand what your motion is.
Yeah, I don't.
Yes.
Okay, because I was going to.
Unappropriate 1 million of the 2.5.
And send back to the ARPA committee?
Yes, send back to the ARPA committee.
It's not been appropriated.
I think it has been appropriated.
It has not been appropriated.
That's why it's saying tabled.
Right. We have it appropriated.
There was a question whether it's been appropriated.
The first, the first two and a half has.
And not transferred.
Well, I guess they've.
Changed the.
So the motion is to send a million dollars of that appropriation, whether it's been appropriated or not, back to the ARPA committee for reappropriation.
And then, so then you want to remain one and a half tabled?
Yes.
Is that the motion? Can that be the motion? Sounds like it could be.
With that clarification, are you going to second that?
Generally, it's asking permission to spend the 1 million of the 2.5 on.
Brad, what you're asking is for this body to send back to the ARPA committee.
A million dollars.
To ask whether or not they will make the resolution back to us.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Did you want to include then, though, in that motion, that you, the intent would be to make whole the million dollars at a later date?
At the time, I'm making the promise to my other counselors and to the commissioners when I talk to them, that at the time we make that million-dollar appropriation, we will make a resolution to replace that million dollars if and when a project for that money comes up.
As amended, I will second.
Perfect.
Madam Attorney, does that make sense to you?
No.
Would you like us to clarify it?
No, we'll figure it out on tape.
Okay, so the motion is on the table with a second.
No, it's already on table, so now it's just the motion to approve.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's done, so now you're just voting.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And with that, I'm going to quit talk.
I don't believe that. Okay.
For a moment.
All right, I can't wait to read that one back in a minute. All right, next item, do I have a motion for approval of vendor plans?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next item. Item D, we have three parcels, resolution CC 04052023-1, a resolution concerning the purchase of real estate for the Small Structures 23023 projects.
So moved.
Second.
All right, this is for three parcels for the highway projects, for our highway project.
196th Street Bridge.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next item, resolution CC 04052023- period two, resolution concerning the purchase of real estate for the Hamilton County Regional Utility District projects.
So moved.
Second.
All right, this is also three parcels that are affected by that project. Do I have any other discussion?
You made a motion, sorry, in this.
There definitely, we have a motion, second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. All right, next item is an interlocal agreement concerning one-time distribution of public safety income tax proceeds.
So moved.
Second.
All right, this is, I think was shared at the joint, the joint meeting? If you guys remember.
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to hold forth that we were hoping, the county was hoping for a new agreement between the entities that's set on the 911 board. Now, we're in good faith, we're going to, since we're the appropriating body, we're going to hand out some cash, but we still haven't got that agreement.
You're not handing out any cash.
Yeah, there's no money yet.
Because it's not appropriated.
There's no appropriation. This is just the interlocal.
The interlocal agreement on a one-time, so we're going to agree to hand out the money and then hand out the money later?
They'll come back and ask for it when they.
Never somebody asked for it.
Yes.
Yeah, and there won't be any monies handed out until the auditor has signed agreements by all the entities that are getting cash.
Okay, well, we're safe then, aren't we?
Noblesville reached out to me, they want to make sure that we understand that this is a one-time agreement. They may want to change what they're asking for in the future. They don't, they don't want to lock into something forever.
Well, it says one time on it, so I hope that that's clear for me.
That's the interlocal agreement, that's not the contract that they signed. So they want to make sure we understand as a body that they're looking for something different down the road.
Okay.
So are we.
Yep.
Any other discussion? All is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Item E, White River Campground Sewer Project Funding.
So this should be motion to table, correct?
Motion to table.
Do I have a second?
You're table on a resolution.
Okay, so let's take no, we don't need to take action.
We don't need to take action.
We don't need to take action.
Okay, we can just come back with it.
Oh, it's a resolution.
On the right way, perfect.
Then we can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So we can't, your second motion?
We just basically are taking no action.
Well, I know, but we already had one on the floor, didn't we?
I remove it.
Oh, you did? Okay, that's fine, that's fine. All right. Thank you. Now to someone that's really good by following the rules. We have item F, the Pre-Trial Services, CJ Miller. Come forward. I think we're handing out plenty of information on this.
Hello, everyone. You received a memo from me last week with an update there in paper, as well as it will be an email tomorrow today. I do know that it's preferred to ask for additional personnel during budgeting. However, the need for our community, as well as for the courts, has changed since January 1st of this year. So I need to bring it to you now, based on that. You will see the asked, the estimated ask, based on some conversations with the auditor at this time, would be for funds in the amount of $435,149 that would cover salary and benefits. One full-time support staff person, as well as three full-time screening analysts who are pre-trial officers. The probation department has helped us out the last six years, sharing a full-time support staff person that they've had to help offset with pre-trial what we needed support staff for, as we've not had that position. That person last Wednesday resigned, got a two weeks' notice, so we will not be able to get any help from probation anytime soon. They're obviously going to be down the person as well. As well as, that's the only person on their staff that has helped with pre-trial, so they know what we need and what we do. So that is a loss there. You did give us permission in our budget, budget year 2021, to hire our part-time support staff person. The career director did not fill that position in 2021 or 2022, so the money that was budgeted both those years was not spent. I came in and did work with Human Resources and got a job description together in October, posted that, we did some interviews in December, I hired one starting in January. I came in and did work with human resources and got job description together in October, posted that. We did some interviews in December. I hired one that started in January. She was here for about seven weeks, but didn't work out and she decided to resign. So we're without that part-time person as well. Um, I was unable to get a lot of response on that part-time posting. I did actually reach out to six different people that applied to see about, um, interviews. I had response only from two of those six to even have an interview. And then one of them canceled the day before because of, are taking another part-time job somewhere. So the person I did hire was actually the only interview I conducted. Um, and I waited about three weeks on that to see if anything else would come through and nothing did. So, so I just want to say that the need, the need is out there. I think we would be able to obtain some better qualified people to work with confidential and critical information for the courts. If we had a full-time position. Um, so I'm asking permission from this body to allow me to use personnel committee to ask about reclassifying that part-time position from a comma B to a comma C, um, which would be, um, equal to what like probation and some of the other courts' support staff classifications are. And that we, um, in turn give back the part-time position for a full-time. I'm also asking for three additional, um, officers. One, um, I stated on here, our caseload has gone up about 320 cases since a year ago this time. And 225 of those has just been since January 1st. So, um, right now we only have three supervision officers at this point overseeing over 1,100 people and cases. Um, and that just in my community, you know, and that can't be managed well by three people. We want to do the best that we can to serve the community, but also help, you know, with safety and court appearance. And in order to do that, we need the personnel to be able to track all the people that are on pretrial release. I also, with the other two additional staff, this is something that I had mentioned to you previously that I would be asking for eventually because it was a charge from the courts to me whenever I got this position last July. And that is to have a total at this point of four assessment officers that could be at the jail on staff. Seven days a week, 365 days a year, from 6:00 AM to 12:00 midnight. Um, I need four officers to do that for shift coverage. So that we can assess everyone that comes in the jail on criminal charge. Right now there's times on the weekends, uh, and some holiday times where we have no personnel available to do that. So it's kind of luck of the draw if, you know, somebody on pretrial is on staff or not. If you get assessed an option for pretrial release, or if you can just pay your money and get out, or you sit there longer because you can't afford to get out and you have to wait till the next time we have somebody on staff. So the way our, uh, the judges have our local rules and the bail schedule right now, the bond schedule is that someone could be held for up to eight hours. Prior to posting bond, uh, in order to give time for pretrial services to assess someone, uh, those assessments take them 30 minutes to an hour, depending on how lengthy the history is, we do.
Director Miller, I, clearly you have a lot of data that supports this.
Too much information, sorry.
No, 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 no. You have a lot of information, I think, maybe, I, I know that, as you know, coming to us and then it's going to personnel community, but is there any comments or questions that you guys have of him at this time?
The only question I have, do you, do you, can you put your finger on any reason that you've had such a dramatic increase in cases?
Yes. So February 17th of this year, all pretrial directors and coordinators in the state, um, were directed to a training by the Indiana Support Services under the Supreme Court, um, with new, um, standards for pretrial departments in the state. That went retroactive and effective as of January 1st, which include, um, following and doing some case management on cases for some people that we do pretrial assessments on, that the courts don't choose to release on pretrial supervision, but order out a money bond, um, for some, whatever the reason may be. Those are additional cases that we have to track now as far as early to peers and new arrests and do some additional follow-up on. So we've doubled our records checks every month that we have to review. So instead of being about 100, it's over 200. And many other things, but we, in order for us to stay certified and remain gold standard for Indiana, we have to follow those standards. So that, this could continue to grow at this point.
Any other comments?
I just made, I was gonna say motion to approve all positions to go be heard at personnel.
Give a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for this being. Oh, I'm sorry, vote, yeah. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No, I'm not opposed. I'm going to get Amy a flight swatter.
Bye.
So you can swat him whenever he gets what he's doing.
Can't hear me.
I can't hear anything out of my.
Hey, Sue, you gotta take over.
Yeah, that's fine.
We need a vote. We need a vote.
All right, item number G, Commissioner's Legal Department, Lee Buckingham.
Thank you, council members. Uh, first off, I want to apologize to, uh, Counselor Masalomni. I perhaps misspoke a little bit during our brief questions we had of me prior to the meeting. So for 2023 at least, the proposal that, uh, that we're asking for is that, uh, two, two new employees, Connor Sullivan and Jan Pickett would come on board, uh, as you had previously indicated. There is, uh, box discussions and a, uh, proposal that the commissioners are going to have for 2024 that will involve a full-blown, uh, development of a county legal department. For now, however, we're asking that Connor Sullivan and Jan Pickett be brought under the current existing, uh, department, director of administration and commissioners. So that, uh, one, we believe this will, um, we want to get that process started. We want to get them in. And in order to do that, we need to start the process with the, um, HR in terms of development of their job descriptions, which will also be then utilized for the full-blown formation of a legal department if that's approved for the 2024 budget. But, uh, there's a lot of groundwork that needs to be laid and established for the full-blown formation. We, however, like to have Connor and Janet on board for the remainder of 2023. Once we, um, we're not asking for their, those positions here tonight. We're asking for the, uh, ability to move forward with the process of bringing.
So they would become county employees.
For the two. We believe that for 2023, we will be able to do it, um, either without additional or any significant additional appropriation under the money that's currently allotted for legal expenses.
Any other discussion? I know that one, the items that you and I talked about was, is, uh, having an organizational, I mean, that's part of what they're going to come on board is to help you build out what that looks like.
They'll, they'll be obviously involved in that, and quite frankly, they would be involved whether they're, they come on board or not. We think that it's appropriate that they come on board to, uh, assist and be part of that at this point in time.
I'm gonna say it's probably a good thing we had the conversation that we did so that it could be clear then what the need was, because it was, yeah, thank you.
I think it's, you know, there, there was discussion about the formation of a, of a legal department. That's for a full-blown for 2024 and that will be as part of our budget presentation to you during the.
And I would say even if it could be prior to budget, I mean, as you guys start through the planning, write a business case summary.
As soon as we have a full-blown proposal, I'll make it available to you.
So two people are going to go, the idea is two people going to personnel community, they don't actually have job descriptions currently? Is that accurate?
They're gonna go.
I, I.
No, they're, they're private contractors.
I understand, but these are roles they're taking. So they're going to go to personnel and they're going to have to have a job description that can be reviewed of personnel and then come back in front of us? Is that the idea?
Yeah, that's, they'll go to personnel for review.
So today is just to start that process. My understanding was we needed to come to you first before we got that ball over.
What's your expectation when you, uh, see you coming on county payroll?
What do you mean by that?
Which, what's your anticipated start date for them on the county?
We don't have one right now.
Okay.
Obviously, the process normally is, is not. Was it a whiff of maybe a whiff? A one, two week process. How we, it's possibly.
So like June, basically. By the time you get through personnel and then back to council, you ideally would be like June, retroactive based on something to that effect.
I think, I think we're looking at summer, late summer.
So any other comments? Do I have a motion to?
Brad.
Brad, say a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, item H, Orden CC 04052023-A, an order is amending the personnel policy and employee handbook for employees of Hamilton County, Indiana. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All right. All those in, oh, I'm sorry.
Motion to suspend the rules and adopt on first reading. Sorry, I apologize on that.
Have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, sorry.
My bad.
All those in favor.
You're wrong.
All right, any, any, any discussion?
No.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, now a motion to, now that we've suspended the motion, uh, suspended the rules, now we have to motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Any, any discussion? That was the motion to suspend the rules. That was approved. Now we have to motion to approve it or act on it. Does that, understand?
So move. We got a motion.
We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, with that, we're going to open up the public hearing. All right, Fund 1,001,01 requesting 392,500, um, of an available appropriation of 40,999,193. Commissioners, um, item number one, additional 30,000 liability insurance.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Number N.
Okay.
It was just an advertisement.
Yep.
All right, um, additional, um, item B, additional 362,500 reappraisal. This is, I believe, for the Bridge of Flowers. Judge Nation?
This was the one that the, um.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Oh, yes, much to break.
A second?
Second.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
It's, uh, the invoice, we approved this last year. Uh, the invoice did not come in, um, so they're asking it to be re-appropriated.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. I'm opposed.
That's two, okay. All right. All right, item B, prosecutor.
Can I make a motion to combine these two, one and two?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Same motion again for this one. Can we combine one to?
Motion to approve item B, one and two.
Second.
Second.
All right. Um, any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Now for C, if we can combine one through three.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Motion to approve item C, one through three.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
Same motion.
Fund 1138, Community Capital Development. You want to combine?
Yep, combine one and two, please.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Fund 1169, um, Local of the Street requesting appropriation of 21,000 on. Mark, I think you were listed as the.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Okay.
What are you going to spend the 21,000 on, Mark?
I gotta find the paper. I think it's signage. Yep, it is. It's signage.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Fund 1171, bridge, um, major bridge fund transfer of 1.7, 1,720,221 and 39 cents. Motion approved?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All right, as I understand, this is a bond payment.
And the next should be appropriated in the correct funds.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, next item, Fund 1176, requesting appropriation of 700,000. There's two items on the air, additional of 200,000 dollars for the Oleo Corridor Study.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Um, discussion?
We had discussion in the joint session regarding the need for this. Um, the amount may be less, more like 160,000, but this then allows them at least up to 200,000 dollars to conduct this study.
Fisher's isn't going to contribute anything.
It's ours, that's specific because it's all the way down the, correct, 96.
It's our. All right, any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, item two, 500,000 for 134th and Oleo Road Roundabout.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right.
I did provide additional information. So you did have, um, kind of the detail of where the discussion started. And then there was also confirmation, um, from Hy-Vee as the developer that basically it is a 500,000 dollar contribution from Fisher's, uh, 500,000 dollar max contribution from the county. And then they would be responsible then for the additional costs, which was listed roughly around 2.5 that we changed. But again, our impact is 500,000 dollars to contribute to this roundabout.
My understanding is that we, we won't be paying any of this until there's an assigned agreement?
Correct. Motion is, would then be to ensure, my motion, let me modify, to say 100, 500,000 dollars appropriated pending agreement, um, between the developer and the commissioners.
Cap.
Cap.
Is that, anyone, who's second, who's second on that? Is he okay with that, Mark?
Mm-hmm, as long as it's cap.
Okay, I didn't know.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Fund 1222, Public Safety Communications, we have a 144 amendment.
So moved.
Second.
All right, there's, um, any discussion on this item? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, all right, seeing none. Moving on. Uh, Fund 4818, GeoBond, uh, GoBond, uh, Series 2022B, a transfer of 700 dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Fund 4819, County Bridge Improvement Bonds, 2023 appropriation. 30,290,979 dollars and 65 cents. Brad, uh, you're, do we have a motion to approve?
Uh, I'll make the motion to spend 30 million dollars.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Brad, your name's always on these expensive ones. Just wanted to say that. I need, any discussion? This is obviously for the, uh, major bridge bonds and appropriating those dollars. Uh, seeing none. None. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Fund 4918, uh, Youth Assistance Program, requesting additional 22,548 dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're another grants.
Mr. President, I would, I would, uh, make a motion that we combine all seven grant.
I'll second that.
So L1 through L7 and all subcategories?
Reductions, transfers included.
Okay. Any, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Motion to approve grants one through seven encompassing all.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and with that, I'll close the public hearing. And then two announcements. Sheriff?
I have none, thank you.
Counsel attorney? Madam Auditor? Okay, with that, I will adjourn.